We have a quorum. And so I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
I second that motion.
All right, moved by Wes, seconded by Deb. Brian, once I click, we're ready for the vote. I was there, Brian. I have nothing. I know, hopefully I don't my password. I can only hit roll call. Join? I know. Join? Statement. Yeah. Oh, okay. Now, Brian? I think I got it. Try again. All right, everyone. W, read the mission statement after we get this vote done. Okay. All right, agenda is approved.
Okay, the mission statement. The mission statement of the Brookings School District is as follows. The Brookings School District prepares all learners to be confident, engaged citizens, empowered to impact the ever-changing and interconnected world.
Thank you. It's now a time for our board members and administration to identify any items on the agenda that could be considered conflicts of interest. Dr. Willard, do we have any this evening?
We have none this evening.
Thank you. All right, this is an opportunity for members of the audience to address the board concerning issues that are not on the agenda. Per the policy, the presentation should be as brief as possible. Unless an extension of time is granted, a speaker is limited to five minutes. And I know we have one this evening, Dr. Willard. You have Dan Nelson. Oh, okay. Thanks. Hi, Dan, thank you for being here. Will you introduce yourself as well?
Yes, Ms. President. Thank you. Members of the school board, Dan Nelson, Brookings County State's Attorney. Just appearing tonight to present the check from Brookings County in the amount of $47,000 in support of the Bobcat Plains Academy, the alternative school that began last year and has had a very significant and positive impact on the youth in our community, certainly from a juvenile justice perspective, truancy, as well as making sure that we're able to implement positive mental health within our school district. It's checked all the boxes. And so we're excited to partner with the Brookings School District on this endeavor. Fortunately, our office was able to collect these bond forfeitures. This was money that criminal defendants had posted and then had resulted in violations. And so it's not any additional tax dollars necessarily, but it's something our office has worked on in the last year. And thankfully, the Brookings County Commission believes in the school district and the alternative school. And so they supported my request to use these funds to further the education of our young people in this community in an alternative way. So just wanted to thank the board for your guys' support in the alternative school and just ensure that you know that I'm doing everything I can to make sure that goals like this in our community are achieved. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you. Really appreciate that. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Very much appreciated. Thank you.
All right, we are moving on to our presentation component of the evening and fun part of our meeting. We get to award our best award recipients.
All right, this evening, board members, we have a couple of best award recipients. And I'm going to start with Jeannie Melmer. And this was one that happened really recently. And it's quite an impactful story. So Monday, and I'm going to read it as it was presented. Monday, February 27th, was a typical day of lunch for child nutrition manager Jeannie Melmer. The students in the first lunch period were wrapping up their time in the cafeteria and had begun to empty their trays. Jeannie began wiping tables. As she was wiping tables, a student came rushing up to her to say another child was choking. She instantly walked over to the student who was choking and performed the Heimlich maneuver until what we know now to be a grape was no longer lodged in the student's throat. A big thank you to all those that helped that day. Janelle Bishop, Andrea Fish, Jeff Olson, to name a few. And particularly, a big thank you to Jeannie Melmer for taking action at a time when timing was so very crucial. The following day, Jeannie followed up with the student and he informed her that he was scared. And she admitted that she was scared too. We are all grateful for Jeannie to be part of the child nutrition team and part of the Bobcat family and the care that she has for the students at Midary. Board members, this was a very impactful one, like I said, and gives me great honor to say thank you and recognize Jeannie as truly a Bobcat best.
Thank you, Jeannie.
Oh, thank you, Jeannie.
Well, thank you, Jean.
Our next one, Samantha Miller. Ms. Miller has been a godsend. She has my son in her class and has shown my child how to grow and respect others. With my son's behaviors, I appreciate that she makes the right disciplinary decisions and I appreciate how she handles the extra meetings. Also, Ms. Miller always responds to class dojo messages promptly, which is much appreciated. She is new to the district and I am truly thankful for her. Keep up the great work, Mrs. Miller. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both, Samantha and Jeannie. Pretty special. Appreciate you both. All right, we are moving on to our communication and discussion items tonight. Oh, I'm lying. I'm sorry. I almost skipped Mr. G. We got a lot going on from Midary tonight. Just Midary night. Sorry, I'm not moving on to communication. I'm moving on to 6.2, our second presentation, which is a presentation from Midary Elementary. Welcome, everybody. We're so glad you're here. You guys can come up too. Chris, do you want them with you, Mr. Grunhagen? Okay, sounds great. We're so glad you're here. Great. I like the outfits as well.
Well, good evening. Thanks to the board for having Midary present tonight. Like I said, I'm going to introduce a couple of our staff members here to give the presentation. And we do have a few special guests in the background. You've maybe noticed, or as you just mentioned, Mrs. Books, that we've got some outfits for our presenters here. A little forewarning, you will be getting up and moving a little bit. Not too much. It doesn't take a lot of movement, but we've got some active participation. And I hear Dr. Willard chuckle a little bit, but you're not in the clear. You get to be a part of this as well. So again, thanks for having us present. We've got Mrs. Moser, our teacher over here on my far left, Mrs. Fish, our technology teacher, and Mrs. Jacobson here to present on some Unified School or School of Champions, some activities that we have done to kind of bring our building together. So again, thanks for being here. Thanks for allowing us this opportunity. And at this point, I will hand the mic over to our staff.
So Midary has been a Unified Champion School since the 1819 school year. Obviously, with COVID, that slowed down our ability to do different activities, but we're really following what Unified Champion Schools represents, which is promoting social inclusion by bringing youth with and without intellectual disabilities together through education and sports. So we do that mostly through Unified PE. All of our classes and all of our learners participate in PE together. We also are working on that whole school engagement. So we have all of our students do a bunch of different activities throughout the year. And then leadership and advocacy too. One of the things Heather Asmus and our Special Services Director reminded us this year is that even though Unified Champion Schools is mainly started with our special ed team, we need to have a unified team and include other teachers. And so that's what we did this year. The first activity we've done since October is we do a monthly snack cart with learners. So staff signed up to join this. They put in a donation. And what we do is we have learners come help us build snacks for staff. So once a month, we pick a different team. They send learners that are both general ed and special ed students. Staff participate by getting snacks delivered to them. We've done a variety of different snacks, including apple pie in a cup, shamrock in a cup, Cupid floats. And the kids love helping make them. We do different assembly lines. Our goal is to have junior kindergarten hosts an ice cream social for staff at the end of the year. Learners work as a team to make the snacks. Like I said, they work in an assembly line system, as you can see. And then they also work on their social skills by taking turns passing out the snacks to staff in the building. And trust me, it gets very competitive when it's your favorite teacher.
Okay, so this part is called leave your mark. And we do this in the art room. And every Tuesday morning, the kids get to come in my art room and paint a ceiling tile. So our janitor Bill is so great and he takes them down for us. And we spread them out. We have temper paint and rollers and glitter paint. And it's basically just like a time for kids. And each, like, we mix up the grades and the levels and the learners. So there's a different bunch of kids every time. So they might sit by someone they don't know. And it's just like a great way for them to like paint and be free and expressive. And I don't have budget for them to have like a huge canvas. So it's like a great way for them to paint. And then it's wonderful because Bill, our janitor, hangs them up in the ceiling. And so their artwork is displayed in our building. And it also hits a bunch of my, like, my art standards too. So it's really fun for them and they really love it.
Okay, next we had March Madness, Rock, Paper, Scissors. So it started out in the lunchroom amongst each classroom. We had a wheel of names to select the brackets, who went against who. And then again, they came up in the lunchroom while they were eating to compete with their peers. We had a pep rally to host the semifinal and final rounds. We served as the judge or the referee. And then we had a special guest, Tyler Miriam came in and he, yeah. So and his son Joe. So it was a lot of fun having them host. So that brings us to an activity for you guys to partake in. We have a school board rock, paper, scissors tournament. So we have a couple more special guests. So if Audrey and Otto will come on up here by us, we're going to have them show you.
Oh, yes. Come on up and show us. We're so glad you're here.
Okay, so first let's show them each of the items. So let's show them what rock is. Can you guys show?
Okay, good.
And paper?
Oh, yeah.
How about scissors?
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to try around with you two, okay? Rock, paper, scissors, shoot.
Ooh.
Rock, paper, scissors, shoot. Rock, paper, scissors, shoot.
You two talk ahead of time. Just kidding.
Rock, paper, scissors, shoot. Nope, so scissors. So the rock covers the scissors. So. Start now? Is there? Okay. So what we would like you guys to do is to pair up. And then we'll conduct rock, paper, scissors with you.
There you go. Are you ready? Are you ready?
Yeah.
First bad, it's bad. Rock, paper, scissors. Tie.
Picks up different.
Rock, paper, scissors, shoot.
All right, Otto, let's go. Let's go.
Rock, paper, scissors, shoot. We're tied. You're going to keep going? Yeah. Rock, paper, scissors. Rock, paper, scissors. Scissors. One, nothing. Rock, paper, scissors.
Oh.
Rock, paper, scissors, shoot.
Good job, buddy. Hey, you can keep going, all right? We got this.
Rock, paper, scissors. Tie. Rock, paper, scissors. Tie. Rock, paper, scissors. Uh. Terry has one. Rock, paper, scissors. Otto has one. So tie, here we go. Rock, paper, scissors. Tie. Rock, paper, scissors. Tie. Rock, paper, scissors, shoot.
Terry won.
Or they both have one.
No.
Oh, Terry won. Good plan, Otto. Terry versus Wes with the championship.
Terry versus the championship.
Otto, can you do that, lady?
Nope, you're going to be with us. Hey. No! Rock, paper, scissors. Rock, paper, scissors.
Terry.
Oh, my God. Oh, okay. Look at this. I love that.
Thank you, guys, for participating. Do you guys have any questions for us?
Board member, any questions? No questions, just, yeah. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, come and... Audrey and Otto, we're so happy you came to our meeting. It's been the best of all the presentations because you guys were here. Thank you. You're really important kids, and so we're so happy. Thank you for coming.
Did an excellent job demonstrating.
You must have good teachers at Midary.
Yes.
Yeah.
Parents too. Good parents.
Good parents too.
We like participating. That was awesome.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Board members, any other questions? Oh, okay. Thank you all for all the things you do. Now let's talk about performance oversight. Just found that to be an odd transition.
I have nothing to report at this time. I know we need to get up there and do a few more reviews of some of our bills. So Terry and I got to find a time, so we need to do that.
Thank you. Facilities and Construction Committee. I guess I would say that all of my updates I was going to provide were in Dr. Willard's board report based on everything that we've been working on, unless Wes has any additional updates. You'll see tonight, we're going to approve a special meeting to have our GMP continue to meet with the teachers and principals on colors and on different floor plans, schemes, continue to work with the city on the Hillcrest lot and a variety of items. And I think Dr. Willard covered most of them and will cover them in his superintendent's report. So Wes, I don't know if you had anything to add for facilities? Okay. Moving and moving. Yes. Yeah, and we'll call out later too. But just be aware, there's different community meetings coming up on those dates, and so we'll call those out. All right, Policy and Governance Committee.
We're meeting Friday. We did miss, with snow days and stuff to get everything ready, we missed our last time we had scheduled. So we are scheduled for Friday, the 17th, and we will have more news then next time.
All right, our School Finance Committee.
We intended to meet last week, but with the legislature not landing on a percentage increase for schools, we deferred it. We have to reschedule it. But we're really pleased that the legislature came down with a 7% number for increase for our state appropriation, state allocation. And so now we'll get to work relative to the budget for next fiscal year and some other things. As far as the facilities are concerned, we're on target relative to financing. And we need to go back and look at some of the numbers for the finishing, the financing of the two new facilities. Basically, no news at this point, but like Teresa said, next time.
Yeah, holding pattern, so.
All right, Mental Health Coalition.
I would just like to announce a couple of things that are coming up. Again, people can refer to the United Way calendar for all of these events, but I just would really like to see as many people as possible take the ACEs training, which is Adverse Childhood Experiences. And there are two of them being offered in the near future. One is Thursday, March 23rd, from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. And then another one on April 13th, which is another Thursday, from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. And the location, check that on the calendar to make sure you get to the right location. And then there's another one called QPR, which is Question, Persuade, and Refer. And that is actually how to look or work with someone who's thinking about suicide, to question them, to persuade, and then to refer. And that's from 11:00 to 1:00 on Thursday, April 6th. So those of you that are listening, if you'd be interested in any of those, go to the United Way calendar and they will share the time and location as well. But I just wanted to make sure everyone's aware of those opportunities.
Thank you, Deb. All right, moving on to General Board Member Communications.
Yes, Madam Chair, I have two things. I just wanted to mention that I will attend the Board of Equalization hearings, which is Monday, March 20th at 1:30, as the school district representative. And then also just thank you to the high school English teachers for the invitation to talk to their students next week about careers. I'm looking forward to that. And just any of, and a few of the other, I guess invitations I've had from some schools. I'm always willing to help. So if there's something that any school needs, I'll be glad if it fits in my schedule. I'm retired, so 90% of the time it does fit in my schedule. I'm happy to help with those things and appreciate the invitations.
Thank you.
I got the opportunity to go to Hillcrest to hear Coach Digglemeyer speak to the students there and read to them on Dr. Seuss Day. And March is also a reading month. It's a great way to kick off that month for our elementary students. And so just like Teresa said, we appreciate those invitations. And so any of the schools that would like to have us come for any event are certainly open to that. And I'm also retired, so most of the time it fits my schedule too.
I just want to put a shout out of thanks to the band teachers. March 2nd was the all-city band concert. So you heard 5th graders all the way up through seniors. And what an incredible job our band teachers do at every school. It was amazing. The high school was packed. But just a shout out to the band teachers and for their time and how they missed a lot of snow days. So they weren't able to practice still to show up with that many students and run it that smoothly. Yeah, just really proud of our band teachers and what they do.
I heard especially the 5th grader, the first year in band, and a high school person sat with them on one song. And that was like, yeah, very, very touching for those little kids, yeah.
Great. Thank you. All right, we are going to move on to our administrative reports. And so I will turn it over to Dr. Willard to share information on the past month or upcoming topics.
Yeah, a few items, board members, to highlight. And Wes has already shared. But again, the news of a 7% increase in state aid. And I think this is just as important with no strings attached. So that's really good. Obviously pending the governor's signature, but really focusing the opportunity to augment teacher salaries with those funds and support what's going on. And as part of that, there was also the sales tax cut to 4.2%. That does sunset, by the way, on 2027, so just be aware of that. And then something else that happened legislatively that was in development. There was a bill that was passed to get an additional $5 million for CTE equipment grants that can come from the Department of Education. And as our district has, over the past several years, worked diligently to obtain those grants, will continue to do so. I think over the last seven, eight years, we brought in nearly $1 million in those types of grants. So again, it's just an opportunity to move forward with that. And then to the point that was made earlier this evening with the donation to our Bobcat Plains Academy, there were five bills and proposals that were put forward for juvenile justice support. And four of those five actually passed through. We're not going to get into all the details of those right now tonight, but those appear to be positive for education and for our staff and for our schools. So again, I'm more excited about that. As you see, we've teed up some things relative to the attendance boundary work that's going to go on. We'll talk about that more in the Policy Subcommittee because that is in policy. We've recently received some different models from the city. They had their GIS person. So I wanted to get that information to the board that we're prepared to start working. They had their GIS person, so I wanted to get that information to the board that we're prepared to start working on that. And as we think through a timeline, really being proactive with that timeline, so that if we end up with a different configuration than what we have today, there's some opportunities through a summer month to do any type of remodels or renovations to other buildings that may require as much. We have the Read Across America activities that was already mentioned, and those are going on, and I'm booked to read in elementary classrooms throughout the district this month, so I'm really excited about that. March 27th, the GMP, so anybody that's interested, that's the time to find out what the final number is for the two buildings. So we're anxious and eager to see those information pieces come forward. As was shared before, we'll exchange packages for upcoming teacher negotiations. That'll happen on Friday, so negotiations is right around the corner, and we've moved that process up a bit earlier this year, which I think is good for everybody involved. So I'll meet with Mr. Binkley, and we'll exchange packages this Friday morning. And then, School Construction, a couple of dates that I think are important to point out for everybody. I mentioned them this morning on the Monday memo. Wanted to share them again tonight. We're doing neighborhood meetings, working closely with our construction managers to share how things are going to be impacted on the site. So, parents, if your child attends school at Midary, that date is the 29th, and that's at 6 o'clock at Midary, and then Thursday, the 30th, at 6 o'clock at Hillcrest. We know that parents and community members in those neighborhoods may be very interested, and I'll even say probably more so at Hillcrest, just for the fact of the detours that are going to occur with traffic in the city. I know that that's something that we've talked a great deal about in our Facility Subcommittee meeting, just wondering what those impacts and implications will be. We're working on getting some advertisements out. We're working on getting the information shared, so we're excited about that. And then equally, I'll be joining Teresa on the 22nd of March to share in the Career Day. That's kind of exciting, and that's going to be the way that I get to celebrate my birthday that day as well, so there you go. Looking ahead to the High School Report, you can see that Tammy Bullington, Administrative Assistant, as named as the Administrative Assistant or the Support Staff Member of the Year at the high school, and Alyssa Loffman, a high school English teacher, being named the High School Teacher of the Year, and we have that listed for every building. I'll be certain to go through that with every report. And then, we did have, unfortunately, a shelter in place that occurred because of a threat that was, as I reported to the newspaper, written on the bathroom wall, and we were able to work with law enforcement. I appreciate, once again, the prompt response of law enforcement and the relationship and partnership that we have there to address that process. That was unfortunate, but again, we had great prompt response, and we were able to deal with the situation accordingly. The Middle School Report, you can see that there are a number of things that are recognizing learners from different events and whatnot there. You'll also see that the Educational Support Professional for the middle school is Mrs. Pam Vanderwoody. She's been a teacher assistant for 20 years, so that's really, really incredible, and she always has a smile on her face. And Mr. Greg Klug, he's a substitute teacher, became a behavior tech at the middle school. So again, appreciate their work that they've done, and like I said, a number of things to highlight in the Middle School Report about student activities and participation, and obviously, a number of successes by our learners. The Camelot Board Report, you'll see that Shandra Wyko was named, as well as Susan Laydlaw, as our two respective recipients. And then, as you look through, there's certainly some celebrations that have gone on this month as we look about our PBIS, the Continued Effort for Positive Behavior Intervention Supports, and how we're supporting our learners. And then equally, it seems like longer than that, but the Super Bowl that occurred, again, just incredible with the amount of food and produce that, or nonperishable products that were brought forward by our learners to donate to the food shelf. It's just absolutely incredible. The Dakota Prairie Report, Emily Charleston has been nominated as the South Dakota Elementary School Art Teacher of the Year, so once again, one of our teachers being recognized at the state level. We're really excited about that. And then, we know that here at Dakota Prairie, Sue Carlson and Heidi Fisher were named as our two individuals being recognized for their Teacher of the Year, Educational Support Person of the Year. You'll notice that there's also a link to get a peek into somebody's classroom, so I hope you have a chance to click on that and take a little look and just enjoy some of the perspective that's being shared there as well. Looking ahead at the Hillcrest Report, Hillcrest teacher Diane Brosek, and then Support Staff Member Jan Schellenkamp, our two recognition individuals being recognized at that building. And then, as was already mentioned, Read Across America with Coach Stuglmeyer, which was an absolutely incredible event. It was fun listening to some of the little people in the corner where I was standing, and one of them was suggesting that he absolutely needed to come back next year, and the comment was, "Why?" Well, because he needs another one of these, and he was holding the trophy, so... It was a fun day, a great event, and a great way to kick off the opportunity. And then, as you see, we had a number of FFA members that traveled throughout the district, not just to that school, but other schools as well, to read to our learners. Moving on to Midary, Andrea Fish, who was just here, was the teacher, and Liz Wyko was a Support Staff Member. And you already heard some of the things, the Leave Your Mark, as was referenced, so if you're in the school, you can see all the colorful tiles. It's a lot of fun. And then you can see the PTA Bingo Night had an outstanding turnout. 270 people attended, so just a great outpouring of support for PTA Bingo Night at the Midary School. The Curriculum and Instruction Report, the PK5 Report, first of all, been going through some screening tools that are part of our process that we go through for kindergarten screening. Right now, down a little bit as of the time of this report. I don't know if this has changed or not. We're at 189, excuse me, learners registered. I would have to go back and look at what our data tells us, but I believe that ends up being a multiplier of, I believe, 1.7 or 1.8, but don't quote me on that because, again, I don't have it right in front of me, figuring out what our total final enrollment is. We've done a historical track of what our registrants are and what it actually equates to in learners. So we'll have that final number of projected enrollments after we have our final number during kindergarten screening. And then, as you see in both of the reports, we're back to state testing windows and going through that entire process. It's a pretty tenuous process that involves, obviously, both of our Directors of Curriculum Instruction, our school counselors, not to mention our technology services that ensure that whole process works well, and you see that laced throughout all the reports that you have in front of you this evening. Our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, you see some references to the State Literacy Plan. Michelle Van De Weer, Dr. Van De Weer was able to participate in a meeting on February 16th with the literacy plan and provide some feedback. And it really is great to see that there is such a strong focus on the science of reading. I know that we have our reading interventionist teams in the district, and they are really focused on that whole science of reading component, so that could be a future board presentation at some point in time as well. Also, in this report and reflecting back in the High School Report, we have a team that's visiting Ridgewood High School, and they are traveling. Today's the 13th, so March 12th through the 14th, and it's to learn how, at a high school level, they have implemented the competency-based education model at their school. This was a school that was identified by our high school staff, and in doing so, they came forward and said, "This is a place that we'd like to visit." And so, the team is traveling accordingly, and the early feedback that I've had, it's absolutely incredible and very beneficial for our team of teachers and staff that are participating in that site visit. Illinois, Illinois. The Director of Special Services Report, we just recently finished with Recognizing Disability Awareness Week, and that represented a number of different colors. There were special T-shirts that were part of that process, and again, different activities throughout each of the buildings to lead up to that whole process. And it's always a heartwarming event because it really does shed light on the ability of all of our learners, and that's really what it's all about. So again, appreciate the work and the team that makes that event happen and happen so successfully. And then we're in, as has been shared before, we're in the results-driven accountability process for our special education programming, and it comes back to increased regular education placement percentages district-wide from 69.9% to 80%, and then some increases in ELA and math scores. So, obviously, that's a big task. It's requiring some programmatic changes, and there are some things that you see listed down below as we're talking through budget plans and whatnot that will emerge. I fully anticipate to talk about how we might do a little restructuring within our special education programming and department to better address those goals through the RDA process, as well as some of the needs that we have. When you look at our numbers, in particular, 2015-16 school year, we ended with 480 learners receiving special education services, and as of February 28th, 2023, we're serving 685 learners in our special education program. And there's a great deal of increase, particularly in the autism spectrum area. So again, we're looking really hard at how we might better serve the needs of our learners and our staff as we talk about how our department collectively is structured. And Director of Activities, a whole host of things to report there in terms of successes at state tournaments and wrapping up some of the seasons. As was referenced, the packed house at the all-city band concert, to a point where Mr. Jewitt and I have even talked about what are some venue options, because what we have now is, we have definitely outgrown the space, so we're going to be talking about and looking at some different options there. And again, just really excited about the launch of the spring seasons, if the snow melts, so stay tuned. Director of Child Nutrition.
Before you get any further, Dr. White, I just wanted to point out, I could not believe, again, about the one-act play, how well they did. That was amazing, and I wish I could have seen it, because after reading through this, and every single one of the participants just about got an award, that's just amazing. And I know that's a history at Brookings High School to have that tradition, but I just wanted to highlight that because I thought that was pretty incredible.
And again, it just goes to show the fine arts are so alive and well here, and something that's really powerful and impactful, so, yeah, very good. On the Director of Child Nutrition, as was shared, the recognition of Jeannie. Absolutely honored to have that opportunity to recognize her contributions. And then you can see that we are moving forward. We've had this discussion previously about the vendor, and there was unanimous vote to continue with the Performance Food Group, and that process has worked really well despite some challenges that we've had with procurement of some supplies. I know that we've had some challenges with menus getting changed, and again, I really applaud Laura. She wouldn't report this herself, so I'm reporting on her behalf. She's very diligent about addressing menu changes as a result of limitations on food and food procurement, because that's been, like I said, a challenge. Director of Instructional Technology and Knowledge Management, it sheds light on something that I think maybe we've talked about before, but maybe not, and that's the technology tool called Gaggle. Gaggle's a program that we've been using in the district for the last few years, and it's something that really helps us to monitor student activity on school-provided devices. And if there's any concerning content, whether it's content that's being accessed, statements that are being made, we get notified and we can respond quickly, working with other partners in the community, whether that's mental health services, whether it's police department, whether it's some other services that we need. It allows for us to have another layer of service and support to monitor content relative to student behavior. Summer Work and Facility Plans, those things, I think, can start going simultaneously, hand in hand. There's a lot to be done in both of those areas, and I know Jason and Hiff's team have been working really closely with our architects and moving things forward with our final plans so that we're ready for the guaranteed maximum price upcoming. Director of Transportation and Buildings and Grounds, again, something that Nate won't report, but I will, that he and I have spent an incredible amount of time on the phone together this winter, and I'm hoping it's done, but Thursday looks like it could be another day where we're on the phone. We've had a number of days, obviously, that we've worked through the snow, and I just applaud him and his crew for what they're doing with transportation. We had a bus, for example, today that had to back up a mile and a half, because they got down the road and found out it was impassable, so... So again, just real kudos to their entire team. Again, not reported, but then you see the snow removal. We're just running out of space, but we're getting it done, and again, I really appreciate that. But the good news in that report is a sure sign of spring, is the announcement that field trips are soon going to be underway, so that's good. Director of Business Services, you can see the Workman's Comp Modification Rating from a .18 and last year, or down to a .81, excuse me, .81. Last year it was at a 1.0. That's a favorable change for us. The modification rate gauges both past costs and claims as well as the probability of future or additional claims, so again, I appreciate everybody in the district working hard to help us address that number. And then, you can see that Mr. Luters visited a classroom donating 22 chicken eggs to the middle school classroom. They could put them in their incubator, so we're watching the days. I don't know how many more days are left, Brian, but next week sometime, so... Maybe there'll be an update picture to share.
Is that your first picture you've ever shared on one of your reports, Brian?
It is. Think it is.
It was really great. Thank you for doing it.
All right, so those are the reports that we have this evening, board members. I do stand ready for any questions.
I had a question, but just a comment that I do read all those reports, and it almost makes me exhausted to see everything that everyone's doing, but I appreciate them. The pictures are fun. The video was great of the 3D wheels, and I just want our staff to know how much I appreciate the time they put in and the upcoming events. I always get in my phone, the ones I can get to, I will try to get to, and so I appreciate that very much.
Thing, I have a couple just small items. One was on those neighborhood meetings, and we can probably talk about that. I just wondered if we need to put up signs like on the fences or anything, kind of like we do those outdoor school board signs. I really appreciate, I've seen the information in a lot of places, so I've seen it in the paper, I've seen it here, but you know you have those "School Board Tonight" things, maybe around those neighborhoods, that'd be good to add, and/or printing off some flyers for the neighbors that directly are across the street from the schools. I'm just really thinking about those houses on 17th and Third around Hillcrest that will really be impacted by a lot of trucks in and out. If they have little kids or all those things, I just want them to be really aware of how this construction site's going to look. Where the trucks will be parked at Hillcrest could affect some park and some dog walking and all those things. So I just thought, if we could get the word out to those neighbors, that would be a good idea.
Is there a time for those meetings yet?
Yep, March, he announced that, March 29th and March 30th.
At what time? 6 o'clock.
Yep, yep. And then, Dr. Willard, I would just like, I have dug through our policies, and so I might just be missing something on the boundaries work. I just can't seem to find where that's listed in our policies, and maybe I'm just totally missing something. So if there's more information on that, I would really appreciate to see that. I don't know what the cadence of the timeline has been. I thought we were on three years, and a year passed, so I just, I would like to see some more information presented on that to the board, and I have asked the Policy Committee to look.
I didn't find anything.
And so I don't know if it's in our operations. I think we've reviewed, we've referred to policy a number of times, but...
I couldn't find anything.
Where is it, I guess, so if, I don't need an answer to that now. I just, we need to get into that.
On the policy, there are the current maps in that part of it, but it doesn't, I couldn't find anything on the timing of what it's supposed to be.
And it might just be a miss from me and from Policy Committee, but I think we need some more information on the boundaries.
And this may seem like a crazy question, but at Hillcrest, in terms of the construction, those huge piles of snow, are we gonna have to do something to move that snow out of there? Because they are really huge.
We can bring that up at the next.
Yeah, the construction management team said they will take care of all of that for us.
Okay, because I was just concerned about the cost of that, if we had to do that, because it's quite...
There's a lot.
Bring over your hair dryer. You'll be fine. Just kidding. No, but we have another, that's a good point, and any of those things get to us, we have another Facilities Committee meeting this Thursday that we'll be a part of. But we, I know Teresa's been to a couple, sitting in on Wes. I feel so confident with our Clark Drew Hausmann team. I mean, just some of the most organized on top of it group that I've worked with, and so I'm just beyond... And so I'm just beyond impressed so far. So our meeting, it's our facilities committee meeting meets on the Thursday at 1:00.
I believe I can, yes.
We're kind of in the nitty-gritty details now.
It'll be on the 16th?
It's the 16th.
At 1:00? Yes, I can.
I lost my train of thought. Okay, any other questions for Dr. Willard based on his reports?
And it's here, right?
Yep. Moving on to other communication discussion items. It looks like we have 7.22 is the first reading of revisions being made to policy AFC Administrator Evaluation. And it looks like we're updating this policy to reflect the requirements of accreditation. We need this approved by March 31st, and then the second reading will take place at the March 27th board meeting is the info I have here.
I have some questions. First of all, is this policy, it looks like it was changed from Administrator Evaluation to Administrative Staff Principal and Assistant Principal? So is this the same policy that all our directors would go through, or what, how are they evaluated?
Per the process with the evaluation requirements for accreditation, we need to have two separate policies because they're very specific, as you see with the different domains listed, the six domains requirements under the South Dakota Chapter 245802, specific to principals and assistant principals. Our directors and our cabinet-level people would operate under a different policy. So this is being adjusted to specifically address principals, then we'd have to come back and look at one specific for directors.
And we don't have one for directors now?
This has been the policy that's been in place. So it's a change in those two.
And then I have a question because these six domains you mentioned, they came from the accreditation from the Department of Education?
The South Dakota statutes.
Statutes? And do they come with any descriptions?
There is a descriptor, there's.
And should those be in this policy? The descriptors for vision and mission, instructional leadership? It seems like if I had to be evaluated and you told me I'm going to be evaluated on this, these six domains, and I don't know what you mean by vision and mission or instructional leadership. So is that something the policy committee will, can work on? But I certainly want to see that in here before I'd ever send it to a second reading.
Absolutely.
And what we had is crossed out. I did, I did go to the Associated School Boards sample for principal evaluation, and there are some descriptors there that I think we could transfer over to this. I don't know if that impacts the accreditation stuff or what, but I do think that we need to do some work on this Friday. And I'm willing to look up and look into other policies to bring for discussion Friday if that's agreeable to everyone.
It looks like all of that information is on the accreditation website, Teresa as well.
Yeah, all the definitions are all spelled out there and everything, so very easy to lift that and.
That timeline going to work okay? All right. Moving on to our consent agenda, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve.
Moved by Terry, seconded by Wes. Brian, we're ready for that vote. I'm looking for a motion of approval from the donated items and, go ahead.
A motion to approve the donated items?
I second that. Moved by Teresa, seconded by Deb. I was just going to comment, thank you to State's Attorney Dan Nelson again for coming tonight and sharing with us. And that's the approval from the reclaimed bail, bond forfeitures. And so just thankful for his creativity and ways to fund all our turn of education as well. Brian, we're ready for that vote? All right, motion passes. Looking for, on 10.2, looking for a motion of approval to supplement the 2022-2023 budget. Moved by Teresa, seconded by Wes.
Do we get a little?
I'd assume we'd have some information.
Yep, just very briefly, this is supplementing four items in our budget. The first one, as you know, four of our schools are on school improvement, so we received $120,000 from the state for Title I school improvement. And that's what you're supplementing for the high school, Hillcrest, Madera, and Dakota Prairie. There's also an ESER II grant, which is Elementary-Secondary Schools Emerging Relief Funds, for $35,000 to add in the strategic plan. And ESER III, there's $19,500 to supplement for the ELLTA position that was added at a prior board meeting. Also, there's $1,576,500 to supplement for the insurance proceeds. Received that amount from the insurance company and budgeting for the expenses for the deratio. Those are the four items.
Brian, on that ESER strategic plan, is that past or future?
That's current. It's, I'm just supplementing. There's been about 30-some thousand spent to date through Studer, so that's current.
So, okay. Explain this.
I think there's a bill in this month's.
Okay. So this is past work that we've done with Studer?
Correct, yes.
This is not the additional work that we're discussing later tonight?
Nope. If that comes up, I'll supplement. If we use ESER funds for that, I'll supplement that as well at a later date.
Okay, got it.
Good question. Thank you. Sorry, Teresa, what's up?
Any additional questions, anybody on that? Okay, Brian, we're ready for the vote. All right, motion passes. All right, we have a couple of certification plan of intents for approval, and so I'm looking for a motion of approval for the certification plan of intent for Carly Chapin. Looking for a motion.
I so move.
Okay, I'll second that. Moved by Deb, seconded by me. Any questions on this, board members?
So we had some of these last fall, and these, I understand are for the new all-day program?
I don't know.
The two of them are, two of them coming up will be?
And I think.
Oh, and one's a, okay, great, great. So this is the one for the all-day program?
Correct.
We're ready for the vote? Motion passes. Looking for a motion of approval for the certification plan of intent for Lori Mogard. Moved by Wes, seconded by Terry. All right, Brian, we're ready for the vote. I'm looking for a motion of approval for the certification plan for Mitch McLagan.
Move approval? I second it.
Moved by Teresa, seconded by Terry. All right, Brian, we're ready for the vote. Right, motion passes. All right, we're moving on to approval of the strategic plan pillars, mission, vision, and values as presented. And I'm looking for a motion of approval. I'll make a motion for approval for a second.
I second that.
All right, discussion surrounding this, I had a couple additional comments, but others?
I think the content of the plan is very good. I think our marketing, we need to take a look at that, the graphic and some of the other things that we're going to use to market and propose this to the, to the community. I'd like to see additional work on that. I wasn't sold totally on that. So I would like to see some additional work on that. But otherwise, in terms of the plan itself, I think that looks good, and I appreciate all the work that went into that, because I know I've been parts of strategic plans, and it's a lot of work.
My sentiments are the same. I really want us to, as we're going to. You know, this will be hanging on the walls in the schools for X number of years, and I really want us to get the look of the pillars down. And to me, just like we talk about, what you visually look at is just as important as what that content is. And so just getting that at a point that we all, you know, just approve and agree. And I don't know, Dr. Willard, if that should go back to the committee that really did a lot of that work and just see, does this graphic represent your intent?
What we wanted to, yeah.
And how we felt about all of the work going on? And just have the teachers back involved with those pillars and what that all looks like. So I think Studer Group did a great job, and I appreciate the plan, but I don't, I'm not sold on how it looks, you know, what our brand is, what our, you know, what we're putting out into the community.
And that's so important, because they won't read that entire plan.
It's going to be all about the graphic.
So that visual will be what they remember.
The visual is a really big deal. So I think we just need to spend a little more, get a little more juice into that, the part of it. But I agree that I agree with the content, Deb.
We really don't have a brand.
Correct, with that, yeah.
I also think we use the term excellence a lot in there, and I don't know what that means. I think there should be some definition, you know, we want to be, we use that in a couple places, and I think it's, although these pillars are supposed to be broad, that's just very broad. And what does that really mean? And I know that might be. My other comment now is we have an attachment on here of an engagement letter, and we are not, to approve this strategic plan, we're not approving anything further with that. And if, if we were going to approve that, it would come to us as a separate entity and with the cost, because it is quite a financial endeavor and obligation, and it's over three years' time. So I think for our staff right now to have to have another thing on their plate and at that cost, you know, I just want to be sure that I'm only approving of the pillars and getting a different graphic and that sort of thing at this time.
That's absolutely correct. And the engagement letter is being updated, so we'll have the latest dates in there, because as you see that one referencing, we just wanted that as a point of information reflecting back to what Casey shared when she was here that evening doing the presentation to the board, talking about that rounding process and everything else. We have talked about it as a full administrative team. We think there's some value, but again, we'll reserve those comments for a later date when that gets brought to the board for consideration. As far as the plan itself goes, I completely agree that bringing a graphic concept or conceptually working with that team to come up with a good, solid graphic representation would make a lot of sense, so.
Is this something that the board would want to table until we have that done? I mean, is there a?
I mean, I don't know if it's possible for us to just support the.
I just want to make sure that gets done.
Plan without the, without the, without the graphic representation.
I just want to make sure that part really, really gets done.
I do too. It needs some work, I think, if we're really going to use that.
Because the approval, does that mean when we do this, this is the new mission statement we read? Is this adopted as of July 1? Is this adopted of, you know, so those are things that I don't know if we've had a full discussion on. I was just thinking that when we were reading the mission statement today. It almost needs a kickoff, so I guess I don't know if we.
Graphic piece, no, I'm not either.
Okay. So can we do, Brian, what should we do, friendly amendment to postpone, or we can postpone? Yeah, postpone. I love postpone. Okay. So who made that original motion? Do you have more to say on that strategic plan?
I just had one other thing to say is, have we looked at any other companies that do this type of advising or counseling or whatever we want to call it? Or is this the only company? You know, when it, I wasn't on the board when this company got picked, but I don't know what the process was to pick a company, or if we looked at other cost-value things or anything like that. That's what my question is.
Yeah, I don't, I just can refer back to when we picked them. We didn't do an RFP process, it was a recommendation. I would feel at this point, I'm not saying we don't need to go with Studer, I would feel at this point disrespectful back to all the work that has been done in the report card pillars part. But I, again, was on the phone last time, just listening, trying to do my best to keep up on that. But I don't know if we've had an RFP for the next steps before.
And should we? I guess that's my question. Are we, if we want to continue, what would the process be? I just, I don't remember much input from the board at all to go with Studer, actually. So, and maybe I just missed it or whatever, but that's, that was just one of.
Okay, so it looks like we need to postpone and include some additional discussion on this item.
And so you made the motion, Kelly, so you're okay amending it?
I did, okay. Yep, I do a friendly amendment.
A friendly amendment, yep.
Yep, to postpone the approval of the strategic plan until we have more information on the graphic representation in a committee meet again.
And will we talk more about the vision, mission statement at that time? I kind of echo Teresa's.
I guess I would, I would maybe see us doing a special meeting then, because that work has been done through committee. So if board members, if more board members are going to be involved in that work, we would need to have a special workshop committee time with that group.
Maybe we just need an explanation why that was chosen. I guess I, the mission statement for, to me, doesn't really speak, say anything. To me, I mean, it doesn't speak to me. So I guess that was only when, if we needed more support from why that was chosen. So yeah, if we table, and I could agree, I agree with your amendment, so I think I was the second.
And then just, just so we're aware, our contract with Studer has ended.
Right.
And so this would be internally-driven conversations for the next round of things. Just so everyone is aware that Casey is not under contract with us anymore at this point. So this would need to be driven.
So I have the motion saying postpone approval of the strategic plan pillars, mission, vision, and values as presented until additional information is presented at a later date? Is that okay?
I think additional discussion with the committee.
Is there a timeframe that is best for overall approval, Dr. Willard?
If we think about kind of backward, backward design approach, and we think about launching the new mission, vision statement, because that's a really interesting question and observation. If we did that, let's say we did it at the turn of the fiscal year, July 1, as our goal or our objective that we're endeavoring to accomplish, we could map a couple of meetings between now and then to get us to that point.
Oh, and probably looking at approval of those items in May.
May, June, yeah.
Then gives us June to work on the branding stuff and, oh yeah, Brian, I think we leave it as such, and then we can work on that as an agenda without a date.
I put additional discussion is held at a later date. Is that okay instead of information? I put additional discussion is held at a later date, is that okay instead of information?
Yep. Okay, everyone okay with that? Okay. All right, Brian, I think do we vote on that then? Yeah.
All right. I'm looking for a motion of approval for the site agreement between the Great After School Place and the Brookings School District.
I move approval.
Second.
Moved by Deb, seconded by Terry, or, yep, Terry. Any questions there?
Just very briefly, we had, we were looking for an agreement between the Gap and District or Great After School, it's been a while since we've done one, so we wanted to get it updated, and this has been run through our legal counsel and GAPS as well, and so it should be set and ready to go.
It's, it's a great partnership for our district, so we wanna continue, so I'm glad we're updating that.
And, and Gap is a great after-school place.
All right, we're ready. All right, looking for a motion of approval for the 2023 spring activity volunteers.
I so move.
Sorry. I'm sorry. I'm on middle school oral and terp. Okay. I know, see, I think I, I got, I got click happy again, I'm sorry.
Mine still shows a middle school oral and terp, so I.
But that's not what we're on, we're on spring, oh, we are on? I just said the wrong thing, I'm sorry, everybody, okay.
Are you guys okay with the same motions?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, I'm sorry, I said spring activity volunteers, but we're in the meeting of middle school oral and terp coach, okay?
I would say that if we don't invest in the middle school, you don't get participation in the high school.
Yeah, okay.
And anyone who works with middle school kids knows you need a large teacher presence.
Extra support, extra duty.
Extra support.
Okay, sorry for saying the wrong thing, everybody. We're ready, Brian, on the middle school oral and terp coach. All right, next, we're looking for, what I said earlier, approval of the 2023 spring activity volunteers.
I'll move.
I will second that.
Moved by Terry, seconded by Teresa.
I just have a question, when we have all these people who volunteer, how are they vetted to be with kids and stuff? Do we have some process or?
I know that Mr. Jewett does all the vetting, I believe, and I can't speak specifically, so I can send information out once I'm certain, but I believe that they are background printed and everything, so thank you, Laura, I appreciate that, yeah, thank you.
Okay, that was my question, so.
And I think many of these are also vetted through 4H, because a lot of them are involved with the shooting sports of 4H, so they've been vetted.
Good question, thank you. We're ready, Brian. Okay, we have moved on to 10.10, approval of the resolution in opposition to the proposed social studies standards.
I move approval.
I will second that.
By Deb, seconded by Teresa. Any discussion, board members? I also have a copy of that, if anyone wants to view that too, a hard copy.
And I think that maybe our constituents would like, would like to know a little bit about that. The reasons we are, are in opposition are outlined in that resolution, and I'll just quickly state that part of it is the development, the process that was done was not the same process that has been used in the past. They're not necessarily based on educational best practices, they're really tasks rather than standards. The biggest one for me is that age and developmentally appropriate, many of these are not age or developmentally appropriate, and I thought I would just read a couple examples for those of you that are home. So first graders, in world history, here are, here is a standard that's expected. The student demonstrates knowledge of ancient civilizations in Asia, the Middle East, Northern Africa, and the Eastern Mediterranean Sea. They identify the major cultural features, stories, and contributions of ancient India, Babylon, and ancient China, and they tell the story of the Persian Wars, including the battles of Marathon and Thermopylae. That was first grade, which I would not pass first grade at this point in my career. Second grade, the student identifies the origins, historical events, and different perspectives of the conflicts between Muslims and Christians, both before and after the Crusades. The student identifies the developments and achievements of High Middle Ages, including the power of the papacy and the mendicant orders. These are at second grade. Now, for those of you that have children that are six, seven, and eight years old, that's the expectation that's put forth in these standards, so.
Part of that, yeah, numerous, numerous standards.
Yeah, and there, there are, volume is another factor, there are so many proposed standards that there would require excessive contact hours to teach students, and that would leave little time for reading, math, science, and the other content areas. So for all those reasons, I think we need to oppose them. I attended one of the hearings in Aberdeen, 90% of the comments that have been made at those meetings and online are in opposition. There's one more hearing, Monday, April 17, in Pierre, and I hope to attend that one as well, and I would encourage parents to attend, they really wanna hear from parents, and I know it's unfortunate, they've had these hearings on workdays, but you can do the public comment online, so that's just my two cents, and I hope the board supports this.
Yes, thank you, Deb. It was probably more than two cents worth, and I appreciate that, I feel strongly about this as well. I think our board is, is made up of a majority of us who've been teachers and have educational backgrounds, and so personally, for me, this is a very heartfelt issue. As Deb stated, these standards are not at all in conjunction with the age of the child that's, is to be learning it, and so I am really appreciative that our board will take this stance and accept this resolution and pass it.
My only other comment is that it comes unfunded, and so expectations to make major changes come without funding associated with it, and it's, that's a major challenge for a school district to have a completely unfunded change to occur, so that would be my additional comment.
I think there's a small amount of funding for curriculum materials, but nowhere near what would be needed for this to be implemented statewide.
Deb, for constituents or parents that are listening, is, do they know how to voice public comment if they can't?
If you go to the Department of Education website, click on content standards, then once you get to content standards, it'll say proposed content standards, and once you click on that, it tells you where you can make public comment, so it's not hard to do, it really isn't, and you can comment on a very specific standard, like you could comment on one of these I shared today, or you could comment on any others. I will say that they did do some revisions, but the revisions were mainly in the area of geography, because the original ones had like very little geography, so that's an improvement, but again, that added even more to this, to these standards, so it's, it's incredibly heartbreaking for me to look at these, I just have a difficult time.
And there are several school districts in the state that have.
I checked, between 25 and 30 have already passed resolutions saying that they're in opposition.
All right, Brian, we're ready for the vote. Again, approval is that you are in opposition.
And board members, there is, Kelly, you said you had a hard copy, so we can sign, and what we'll do, given it was unanimous approval, and we'll submit that, upload it to the site, so everybody is aware that that is official position of the Brookings School District.
All right, I am looking for a motion to approve holding a special school board meeting on March 27, 2023 at 5:15 PM, and that main agenda item will be approval of our GMP that day.
I move approval of the board meeting on the 27th of March.
Okay, moved by Wes, and I seconded, Brian.
I, I just have another engagement that evening, so I will have to leave by 7, but.
Okay, I think we should.
We can keep the agenda short.
Yep. Good, all right, we're ready for that vote. I think an hour, I mean, I just think we'll have a smaller agenda. I think we'll be okay. Waiting on you, Deb, I think. All right, motion passes. All right, I'm looking for a motion of adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
Right. Moved by Deb, seconded by Teresa. And it's still light out. Oops. Did it work? Okay. All right, Deb and Terry, sorry, you need to vote. Oh, okay, shoot. It shows you're not, hadn't voted. Yeah, it just shows on mine that you didn't vote, there goes Deb. Thank you, everybody.